Call the North Smithfield School Committee Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four to order. Look, please call the roll.
Chair Lardie.
President.
This is Mayo here. Mr. Connell?
Yeah.
Mrs. Vada?
Here.
Mrs. Baramoli advised me earlier that she would not be able to make it.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We are a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do anyone who wants to make a public or community comment? Hearing none, I'll move on to the consent agenda. Anybody want to pull anything off or talk to anything, talk about anything else on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to speak very briefly. I did two, seven and twelve.
But you want to just speak on them or you want to pull them off?
Just to, no, just to speak.
Okay.
That's awesome. Can you, am I, my volume okay? Yes, yeah, no, I just, I just want to say, I mean, either, I'm just very happy to see that, I just want to talk about the employee assistance program renewal. I know when we talked about this a few years ago, we started it, I just think this is very important to have, especially in the climate today, and I'm glad that we're, we're, I know, I'm just saying, I'm glad we were focusing on that because this is such an important thing to have, an employee assistance program, and I think it's, it's just very important, and I'm just happy to see it there. And I also just want to say on number twelve, I just showed the application with the grants, very excited to see that's going on too. Again, we're moving to address issues. And, uh, you know, we've covered a lot of different issues here, so just happy to see both those on as among some of the other items. That's all.
Okay, thank you. So any further discussion? I'll move, I'll entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda as presented.
The motion.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, moving right on to reports, Superintendent?
I'm just going to share my screen in a second here. Oh, dear. If you can see that clearly, uh, October is the time to present the enrollment numbers. So October first is our snapshot in time. And we've had some changes which I will be going over with you. Uh, first of all, this year we are down twenty-six students from last year. One of the things that really caught us last year by surprise was this enormous first kindergarten class. We actually anticipated a very large kindergarten class coming in this year, but as you can see, last year in October was a hundred twenty-one students for kindergarten. This year it's seventy-nine, so it's actually a small kindergarten class. Our kindergarten class last year has actually become an even larger first grade class, going from a hundred twenty-one and adding eight additional students in first grade. But as you can see, if you, when I send you copies of this, you can take a look at the last year grade level. Most of them are pretty similar. There's a couple of drops and gains, so I'll just go through. So one twenty-one kindergarten to a hundred twenty-nine first graders. Hundred four first grade became a hundred second grade. Hundred twenty-seven second grade became a hundred thirty-third grade, one oh four third grade to one oh two, pretty similar. Fourth grade to fifth grade had a jump, one fourteen to one twenty-four. Fifth grade last year just added a couple of students, one twenty-three this year. A jump between six and seven, one twenty-nine to one thirty-six. One twenty-seven, lost a few kids, one twenty-four. Eighth grade last year, one twenty-one, gained a couple of kids, one twenty-four. Uh, ninth grade, one forty-three, dropped a few kids in tenth grade. One forty-three last year in tenth grade to one thirty-six, another drop to eleventh grade, and we gained a couple of kids from eleventh grade at one forty-five to one forty-nine. So the net change over the, over the year, last year to this year was twenty-six students. Now, on the side here, you can see the current class, uh, enrollments at NSCS, five hundred eighty-three students, last year it was six hundred and one. This year at the middle school is five oh seven, last year was four ninety-seven. At the high school this year, on October first, was, uh, five hundred forty-seven, last year it was five hundred sixty-four. Now, breaking out some of the students. So the students with IEPs currently as of October first, we had two hundred and sixty-five students with IEPs, the year prior to that was two seventy-nine. This is high-cost special ed, out-of-district tuitions, this is our, uh, uh, medical residential placements and so on. Last year we had fifteen, this year as of October, we have thirteen, we may be adding, uh, a new student, um, shortly with, uh, significant needs. The transition students are, uh, it's again part of our special ed program, it's more of a life skills type of thing, and we retain, we, uh, we provide services to the age of twenty-two. So last year there were seven transition students, this year four. Services, now we provide special education services for early childhood, plus also for families who decide to homeschool, who have IEPs, who need special ed, so that, you know, we have these services. Last year was twelve, this year fifteen. Here's a big change, the multilingual learner, ESL, ELL, depending on what generation you're from. Uh, last year we had thirty MLL students, this year forty-seven. Which, back when I started, which is off this chart, we had nine. So, but, and, and I'll tell you something with the, uh, M, ELLs, MLLs, is that MLL Rhode Island has the highest percentage of MLL growth in the entire country. Right, so it's not just, it's the entire state has the largest influx of MLLs in the entire, percentage-wise in the country. Now, as far as the percentage of the population, I think we're fourth or fifth in the country. So it is a growing population. We have last year, this year, last year, uh, hired another MLL teacher. The numbers are getting tight, we're, we're, we're looking, we're, you know, we're keeping an eye on things.
May I ask the question?
Yes.
What grades, I mean, are they pretty much across the board, just across?
The largest concentration right now is in the elementary. And, uh, it's not really any one specific country or region.
Right.
You know, so it's, uh, we, we have a, a very strong mix of, um, um, students from all around the globe. Five oh fours, slight increase, you know, past couple of years, those, they, they have been increasing, the number of students with special, uh, accommodations. Now, our CTE program, right at the high school. This year we had fourteen new students enroll in North Smithfield High School CTEs. Uh, one withdrew, we anticipate seven of, seven will be graduating this year. Collectively, at the school, we have forty non-resident students paying tuition to come to North Smithfield High School. Their district has paid the tuition. So that number continues to grow. Here's another concerning number that is growing, uh, the number of homeschools. So during the pandemic, yeah, going back in time, we had twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-nine, pandemic came, you know, in, uh, uh, quite a bit of homeschooling application, fifty-one, forty-one, endemic slowed down, back to twenty-nine, last year twenty-seven, this year forty-six. So a, a large increase in, um, families who are choosing to homeschool. To break that down, of that number, the bulk of them are elementary school, which, which is often typical, families move in, in fact, uh, one of the, I'll, I'll just highlight, of the forty-six students, they're from thirty-two families, so there, there are families that homeschool all the kids. So, and typically homeschooling you'll see at the elementary level, and I don't want to say that it's easier for families to homeschool at the elementary level, but, uh, you know, once you start getting into advanced math and such, that's, that's when a lot of the parents kind of drop out, not drop out, decide, you know, they need more support, uh, for, for homeschool. Middle school, there, there's, uh, nine middle school age students, uh, who are homeschooling. Uh, the increase comes at the, the high school. And, you know, I've, I've talked to the superintendents around the state, this isn't just the North Smithfield thing, where we're seeing a spike in homeschool. And you're going to see a lot of information coming out from RIDE on Friday with the RIDEcast scores, attendance, and, uh, uh, mental health issues. There's a many things happening. A lot of our homeschooling applications now are for two reasons, um, truancy, so once students start getting into the truancy level and truancy part, we find a number of our families switch to homeschooling. The other is mental health, anxiety. Just coming to school is, is, is a struggle, is a burden, and so homeschooling, you know, is, is, is usually often, you know, requested from, from the families. And again, not a Rhode Island, not a North Smithfield thing, this is right across the board. So the other numbers here are, and this is unfortunate, we have, we also track the number of stu-, North Smithfield students who decide to go to charter schools, uh, other school CTE programs or vocational schools. And this year was a bump, so two years ago, sixty-six students were in charter CTE vocational, sixty-seven last year. This year it jumped to ninety-seven. Now, of the ninety-seven, well, first of all, of that, we also look at how many were new applicants to, to seek to, uh, out of district. We were holding even at fifteen new students, thirteen new students, twenty-seven, eighteen, twenty-six, and then bam, this year forty-eight. Which, I'm also going to bring this up from a budgetary standpoint, we did not anticipate um, the level of tuitions that we're paying right now. So the breakdown is of these ninety-seven, you know, sixty-one are going to charter schools, which is, which is basically, uh, Rise Mayoral Prep, which goes up to the eighth grade, and Beacon Charter. We went from eight in Beacon last year to fifteen in Beacon, thirty-six at Rise to forty-six at Rise. For the CTEs, that would be Barville, Franston, come, actually, I think, I have to go back, Franston may be a vocational. Uh, North Providence, Ponte Gansett, you know, Sitewitz, Smithfield. These are students going to CTE programs that we don't offer at North Smithfield High School. So, but keep in mind, when you look at the CTEs, we have forty in, twenty out. So we're, we're very much ahead of the game. Now, we do have breakdown of the different CTE programs the students are going to, that they're choosing. And, you know, at some point we may add some additional CTEs, but right now, uh, we have our, our three core, which we're doing quite well with the, the forty students. And then the vocational schools, and the vocational numbers climbed when Davies joined the mix. So we have eleven students at Davies right now, and, uh, when Socket is great. You can see the change, you know, once upon a time, when Socket had the bulk of them, Davies came in, and now we have two vocational schools that North Smithfield students can choose between. So that's where we stand right now. We are looking very heavily at the homeschooling situation. We, you know, we have an, uh, uh, rapidly expanding MLL population. We have a successful CTE program, and so, but when we go to the budget standpoint, again, one of the, two of the reasons, uh, one of the reasons in the past two years we've had increase in state aid to education is because our enrollment went up. Our enrollment has gone down, right, through homeschooling, through, um, uh, uh, CTEs and charters and vocational, so I don't know what impact that's going to have on the budget, I don't know how the state is going to maybe make some adjustments to accommodate this if they can, so just a, a few things we're looking at. Any questions on the enrollment before I jump to the next one?
How do you code duo? Like, it's not, it doesn't fall in charter, it doesn't fall in the CTE, it doesn't fall in the book?
Oh, yeah, actually, and, and we have a couple here.
I saw a few.
Yeah, and
It's a good thing.
Which is ex- excellent, so, you know, we have, uh, uh, one student who is taking classes at CCRI right now for college credit, and we have another one taking classes at, um, Johnson and Wales for college credit. I don't know, you know, I don't know where they stand as far as state aid to education.
Thinking you're going to the front, but they're not at your school.
No.
Well, I'm sort of just curious to know how that.
If you'd asked me that question back when I was doing data in the RIDE reporting, I can answer that, but that, that's all a fuzzy blur right then.
Let I know, collect, and get ready.
Yes. All right, so one of the other things that, um, the chair asked me to take a look at is, um, the state rankings. So Okay. So, so I find this unfortunate in that whenever these rankings or the, uh, come out, there's always this beauty contest, uh, pitting district against district, and school against school, and it doesn't really capture what is going on in the buildings. And when these things are cited in the media, it's often taken completely out of context in how these rankings are derived. And so one of the, one of the ones that keeps coming up over and over is US News and World Report. And now, I tried to collect the rankings from US News and the World Reports over the years, but their website, they don't let you select a year and then take a look at the data, they only have this year's data, the most recent one. And so to go back and find where the rankings were, I had to go Google searching through articles that had some listings. So twenty sixteen, US News World Report put the high school ninth in the state. Uh, twenty seventeen was four, twenty eighteen was four, twenty nineteen was four, twenty twenty, over year. I don't even know if they did it, I could not find any information, I couldn't find it anywhere. So I put a question mark. Uh, twenty twenty-one, I have nine with a question mark. I cannot find this in any news article anywhere, it's what I remember, I remember us being ninth, and then eleventh. And then twenty thirteen was thirteen, and twenty fourteen, what, twenty twenty-four was fifteen in the state now. When I say in the state, this is out of the hu- high schools, fifteen out of sixty-one. Right, it's not fifteen out of thirty-six, it's fifteen out of sixty-one, including charter, you know, every high school. But let me just show you how they rank these. It is very limited, so they, they, they have these measures, college readiness, the percentage of twelfth graders who took or passed an AP or IB exam. All right, AP students, that's it, percent who took it and passed it. College curriculum breadth, the percentage of twelfth graders who took and passed multiple AP or IB exams. So it's still advanced placement exams, doesn't look at anything else. State assessment proficiency, um, SATs, uh, PSATs in, uh, math, reading, science. State assessment performance, um, again, it's from the state assess, so proficiency and performance, underserved population, and then graduation rate. Something's happening here. Okay. So what's basically what this works out to, is that the US News rankings favor large high schools with a lot of students who are taking or trying to take AP classes. So the fifteen out of sixty-one, um, that explains, it's not looking at attendance, it's not looking at school culture and climate, it's not looking at suspension rates, it's not looking at anything other than assessments.
And it's only looking at twelfth grade for the AP?
Pretty much, yeah.
That student's taking AP?
Earlier, yes, so I stand, I hold up North Smithfield High School as being more than just a thin sliver of a US News ranking. Now, US News also does rank K to twelve. Right, for elementary-middle rankings, they're both, they are based almost exclusively on state assessments, and where there's a tie, they look at student-to-teacher ratio. Again, very slim view of a school, however, the middle school in US News World Report is ranked number six out of a hundred thirty-nine middle schools. Pretty good. I would say fifteen out of sixty-one high schools is good, six out of one thirty-nine is excellent. And NSCS, thirty-eight out of two hundred and sixty-four elementary schools. Nice work, but again, it's not the whole picture. Now, when we look at last year's RIDEcast results, if you want to look at, um, our, our grade levels and how we fared in the state. So this is out of thirty-six districts. English Language Arts, grade three was fourteen out of thirty-six. Grade four, eleven in the state. Grade five was thirteen in the state. Middle school, grade six, fourth in the state, seventh, sixth in the state, eighth, third in the state. On mathematics, our third graders out of, again, out of thirty-six districts, and these are with, with multiple elementary schools, multiple middle schools. Uh, tenth, math, uh, uh, fourth was six, fifth was eleventh in the state, six, seven, and eight, five, five, and five in the state. Very strong standings. But now let's go back to the high school with another measure, and this one is a much more complete picture of how a school is performing. And again, I want to address those who keep looking at, oh, US News, they're number fifteen in the state, in the state, again, it's out of sixty-one. And yes, there were some slips, but again, there's more going on than just that. So RIDE has a state accountability system that looks at multiple measures. Academic achievement, English Language Arts and Mathematics on the assessment, not just how they did, but the growth, how they did this year compared to last year compared to the year before. Uh, English Language Proficiency, Proficiency, Graduation Rate, uh, Diploma Plus, which is how many students, uh, receive the Commissioner's Seal, uh, they look at post-secondary success, but it also looks at Student Chronic Absenteeism, Teacher Chronic Absenteeism, Student Suspension, and then Expectations for English Language Arts and Mathematics, so again, more measures, bigger picture. And the way they break it down, they add up everything, and if you're great in every category, you get five stars. Right? If you need some improvement somewhere, for example, if one of your subgroups under, um, you know, your performance, so could be MLL students, it could be students of poverty, it could be special ed students, it could be, you know, uh, uh, broken down on a racial basis. You get one, one subgroup who isn't quite performing up at that level, it's four stars, and so on. And the star rating, your lowest star is your entire school. All right, so if you have, and I'm going to show you, in the state, there are eight high schools that are four and five-star rated. Five-star Barrington and East Greenwich. They're the same every year. Four stars, Exeter West Greenwich, Narragansett, North Smithfield, Portsmouth, and Smithfield. That's it, this is the creme de la creme, uh, in the Rhode Island State Assessment System. Now, not all North Smithfield High Schools are four-star, right? Not all four-star schools are created equally, let's take a look at North Smithfield High School. In Diploma Plus measures, five-star, and you look at the coloring, this dark blue is strong performance, the yellow needs improvement, the majority of our kids in, the, the majority of the measure, it was strong performance, five-star. Graduation rate, five-star. School quality and student success, five-star. Achievement and growth, this is SAT. Four stars. That's why North Smithfield High School is a four-star school. With a boost in here, it's five-star, it just missed five stars by one measure. So I just wanted to address some of the ranking concerns that have been out there, and, you know, hopefully bring a little bit of clarity that, uh, we're doing exceptionally well, no matter how you look at the schools. And it's something to be very proud of. The schools, the schools, our teachers, our students, our community. I don't think it's something that should be just readily dismissed because there is a slip in one number in one measure from some report, one report.
Thank you, Superintendent. You have any questions? Great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we're gonna, um, skip four. We're not gonna. The only person I want to comment. Is Travis. So Travis came into the I T department about a year ago. And Adam Stanley and I, we looked at his qualifications and we thought, oh, he's not going to last long because. He can make a lot more money somewhere else. And we figured, you know what? Let's keep him for six months. And at least we're going to get six months of genius. We've got a year of genius, but now it's time for genius to move on. So he gave us ample warning. He just loves the district. He, uh, you know, loves what he's doing. We've had with him an amazing I T department, you know, on top of, uh, you know, Dylan and Adam and. Melissa, I mean, it's just, just such a great department. So, but, um, we just wish Travis the best. And we're just so happy he's, he's been here with us. Um, as far as B and C, no, I, I don't accept those. No, I, I don't. So. Who wants to start on Lisa?
I, I'm just happy to find out that we don't have to say goodbye until January eleventh. Give us a little bit of, of time, but when I walked in, I said to Lisa, just say it isn't so, but you will be so missed. But I know that you've been doing a wonderful job getting Alicia ready. So thank you for everything that you've done.
We are so fortunate to have Lisa. Her memory is just freakish. She remembers everything. She has such institutional knowledge and she has just. Been here and held everything together. Through multiple administrations and has just been a cornerstone of. Not just finance, but H R, the whole administrative team. Um, but we also are very fortunate to have Alicia, who will be stepping up as interim. And could not think of anybody better. And the fact that. Finance directors are near impossible to find and hire and retain in the state. We have just been blessed to have Lisa with us as long as she has been and to have Alicia. Ready to step in. So we. We're very fortunate here in North Smithfield.
So I, I just have to say, first of all, thank you for coaching what you did when I was secretary and had to figure all this out. But when I think back. I think on all the years and all of the meetings that you had to go to and endure and answer all the questions. With the patience that you had, um, it, it was a marvel to watch. I had to sit there and endure. In, in, in the crowd, the abuse that you took over the years. And I just want to thank you for everything you've done for North Smithfield. Not forgotten. And thank you for preparing Alicia to, to fill in. Thank you.
I'll just echo what everybody else has said, um. Again, I've been the secretary for the last two years and we've worked on a lot of things, you know, just in those two years with Alicia too. And I'm really excited to. Uh, the prospect of going forward. I feel very comfortable. I've asked you to reconsider so many times. I'm not going to ask you again. So, um, I've really enjoyed your help, helping me with the, as secretary and, uh. Just like really to echo what's already been said, your ability to return texts and emails and calls immediately or. Just any ability to, to the demeanor in the meetings. Again, I just echo what everybody says. It's a, it's, you're very, you're very good professional. At all times and, uh, you know, we'll miss you.
So I, I first let me thank you for, um, leaving us, um, with solid finances and stability. Um, as you know, I go to different districts and. And obviously read the paper and different things. And there were a lot of districts trouble. Didn't spend their S F funds properly. And, um, I want to thank you for that stability. And I can tell you that from day one, I always felt very comfortable with you having control of finances. So, uh, it was a big weight off our shoulders, um, to, to, to know that you were always doing the right thing. So I want to thank you for that.
And again, we have.
Yes, and Lisa, thank you for taking over. Uh, that's another weight off of our shoulders, um. And we know that you were trained well. And outside of that, you have always been cooperative. And again. Um, upfront, tell us what we need to know, not hold things back. And you know, a lot of finance directors are, are like to hold stuff back from me. And that's not who you are. And, and I appreciate you taking this on. Thank you.
And again, we don't have to say goodbye just yet, right?
She said she would even be available afterwards for any questions or assistance.
Thank you.
And you know, well, Alicia, again, just to. Okay, I got, I've worked with you a little bit as a secretary, but all just over these logic things. And in fact, I'll even say at the budget committee meetings. Um, and before the town council, the, the, the whole team of Claire, Lisa, and Alicia working together. I was there the last night listening to him and going over, seeing what they were doing and. Trying to get us out of the way. And I, I just very impressive how they work together and also work with the, the council and with the town's fiscal officers as well. So. Um, again, hate to see the team get broken up, but again, change is inevitable. And so I feel very comfortable where we're going in the future.
And congratulations.
Okay, let's, uh, move on to all business. Lisa, anything on that? Thank you. Um, yes, of course.
I just wanted to mention. Oh, no, I, I, if I can just go back on the extracurricular appointments, um, I just saw Adam as the freshman class, actually, Mr. Stanley. As the class advisor. I, I just wanted to recognize, and I mean, every, everybody who steps up, we really appreciate that, but. I, I know Adam's done a great job for us in the tech role. And I'm really kind of excited to see, uh, how he does as the freshman class advisor. I'm sure he's going to do some great things with his students and, uh, look forward to that.
He's also, um, every year has had at least one or two, um, students mentoring for senior projects.
And the factory as well too. Happy to see both of them stepping up to be advisors.
Okay, moving on, I'm going to, uh, entertain a motion to go to executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws forty-two. Forty-six, five A regarding security, including but not limited to. Deployment of security personnel or devices. Motion been made, is there a second? Second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Chair Lombardi?
Yes.
Snail?
Yeah.
Mr. Conell?
Yes.
Mrs. Spada?
Yes.
Alright, I will.
We're in executive session.
Pause the recording and turn off the video and audio until we return. Okay. Okay, that's, that's better.
So I'll entertain a motion to leave executive session and reconvene in open session. Motion's been made, is there a second? Second, um, roll call please.
Chair Lombardi?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Conell?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, I'll entertain a motion to seal the record.
Don't move.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, all opposed? The ayes have it? Uh, for the record, we did not take any votes, uh, in executive session. Um, and I'll entertain a motion. To the emergency response plan. As discussed in executive session with discretion, with discretion of the superintendent to make, uh, changes. That, that's, that's, yes. Right, oh, motion to approve, well, alright, sorry, let me, let me read it. So, um. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the emergency response plan. As presented in the executive session. With discretion of the superintendent to make changes.
Somewhat.
Motion's been made, is there a second? Second, any discussion? Okay. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it? Uh, any further business? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it.